The more we move, the better we're going to be. And so I believe that personal fitness is not defined by what your scale tells you, or how fast you can do this on a machine, or how much weight you can lift. I believe it's your own gauge on, do you feel happier today than yesterday? Do you feel like your body is moving more? Do you feel like you need to drink more water today? Or how about your appetite? Do you feel like you have, you know, I need more energy because, man, yesterday's workout was really tough, and I know my body needs that nourishment to heal itself, right? And so as you start building in this capacity, and step by step, finding where your comfort zone is, it can be yoga, Pilates, group weight training in one of our classes, it can be doing a cycling class, Orange Theory, I don't care what it is. But finding the place where you thrive and have fun, and our challenge is what I think personal fitness is all about.
You're listening to America's Healthiest City on Mike King Biz Radio Network on ESPN Richmond 106.1 and Choice 105.3. Welcome to America's Healthiest City on ESPN Richmond 106.1, part of the Mike King Biz Media Network. I'm Will Melton, your host, and today we have Andreas Addison, the Councilman for the First District of the city of Richmond, as well as the owner of Pure Fitness, among other titles that he carries that we'll talk about on the show today. But before we get into the interview, if you have not visited AmericasHealthiestCity.com, please check out the ideas board there. Submit your ideas, comment on others' ideas. And if you represent a nonprofit, a business, a for-profit, or a government agency, and you want to get involved, learn what it means to be an ambassador, check that out on the website as well. Please also follow us on YouTube and Instagram to catch clips of our show and see full episodes. Without further ado, Andreas Addison, thank you so much for joining me on the show.
Well, thanks for having me. Glad to be here.
Well, I'm excited to give our listeners a little bit of a deeper look into you, or deeper listening to you, depending on how they're consuming today's show. But before I get into it, I ask everybody the same question. Are you a native to Richmond, or did something bring you here at some point? And so what?
I'm a Virginia-born and bred individual. Was born outside of Alexandria, grew up in Shenandoah County, came here after college in 2004. December will be my 20th year being in Richmond. So for those Richmanders, I am not a native person, but I call it home.
Well, everybody has a different story, and it's quite all right. I've talked to folks who moved here at six months old, folks who, yeah, all over the place.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I'm a noob. I came here in 2017, so I'm very, still figuring things out here. But I want to talk a little bit about your background, because you are, you're a varied individual. You've got a lot of different titles, and you have a lot of interests. I'm interested today to talk about, you know, both the health component from an individual health perspective, because you have a lot of insight in that, but you're also a policy expert and an adjunct professor on the subject. So let's talk a little bit about your background. I know that you were an analyst to start off with, before you got into city government. So give us a little bit of the lay of the land on what brought you to where you're at today.
So I was a political science major at Virginia Tech. And so when I graduated in 2004, I had ambitions of using my degree in some capacity in the public realm. And so over a couple of years, I helped open Can Can Brossery, worked at a couple of other businesses around Richmond. And I had always been applying for jobs either at the state or the city level. And so finally, I got a call back to be a management analyst two in the Budget and Strategic Planning Office under our first strong mayor, Douglas Wilder. And so I took the interview over about two months of the process, was able to get hired in City Hall. And pretty much, I was brought in to help work on performance management, improving operations of government, trying to create what they called in New York City, the City Stat Initiative, under Bloomberg, and trying to bring that model here to Richmond. And so what I was really focusing on was just government operations. And in that became kind of starting the, what became now the RVA 301 Call Center. And so I helped really organize how the government organizes responses to citizen issues, complaints, and requests for service. And more importantly, making sure that we can respond properly, communicate properly, track how long it took us to do the work. And so a lot of that work was just me getting to understand the flow of government. How does government work? When you complain about a pothole, or a trash can, or a missed service delivery issue, what is the process of receiving it to completing the response satisfactorily? So that was the basis of my office and my time in City Hall. I finished my MBA at the University of Richmond, and that's what catapulted me into more of the innovation space. And so I really kind of spearheaded a bunch of special projects, and under the Dwight Jones administration, focusing on things around poverty. And so a lot of the concerns that we had were in regards to stopping generational poverty, understanding its causes, its impact on quality of life, impact on community health outcomes. And so I really became passionate around, you know, how can the capital city of Virginia have these really big disparities? How can we have 27% of people living in poverty? How do we have schools with 98% of the children attending being on free reduced lunch? And it was interesting, because I grew up in a low-income household in Shenandoah County. And so for me, I knew what my situation was, being on free lunch as a kid, but I was a minority. I was not part of the typical student. And so for me, it was more of a, this experience I grew up with, so seeing that it was very different, more concentrated, and more of a, kind of almost expected population of students. And I really dug into, where did this come from? How does this be, how's this created? Where does this start from? And the history of Richmond is a fascinating kind of understanding of how we got to the city we have today. And so that's really what became my passion, was understanding and trying to intervene and kind of disrupt the expectations on the status quo, especially as it relates to poverty, and trying to find ways in which to address that. So we focused on healthcare, and improved access to healthcare. We focused on issues around trying to combat the impact of displacement from gentrification investment. Then we worked on understanding how people interact with social services. And so my career post 2012 to 2016 was really diving into some of the really kind of unfortunate challenges facing many residents and families and children in our city. And that's really where my political career, I think, really became cemented in, the change that our city needs to see.
So I've had the opportunity to read some of your writings, and I understand that you, you're thinking at a, we'll say, cerebral level on some of these solutions. So you're looking at things like land use and tax of land use in order to, you know, that ties into, I guess, the question I have, is that ties into generational wealth in a sense? And so it might be boring for some people, but for you, it's important. And for us, it should all be important as well. So can you talk a little bit about, you know, maybe in the simplest terms, like, you know, land use and tax?
Yeah, land use, taxes, all the things that make our city what it is. We all start with the basics. A lot of the land use policies, zoning, we have today are from about the 1970s. And so, you know, historically, you can look at some of the things that are in our complex zoning code, and the fact that there, I think, are over 40 to 50 different zoning types in our city is way too many. And when you look at some other modern, growing cities that we look to as model examples, their zoning code is very specific, and it's very identifiable for single-family residential, multifamily residential, mixed-use residential, and all the way up to big skyscrapers and tall buildings. And so when you really strip down some of the complexities, you could kind of see a little bit about how our city was built, and why some places looks different than other places in the city. You can see it in what areas are zoned that way. And so when I look at zoning, zoning dictates use. And by zoning in certain corridors and areas of our city, you're saying to builders and investors and homeowners, this is what we want to see brought into this area. And zoning creates that message. And so when we see this master plan, the best master plan in America in 2021, the Richmond 300 Master Plan, coming into this place of implementation, what's really coming into it is, if we want to see a diverse, inclusive, and vibrant future city, we need to make sure we understand why it's not. And a lot of the things about why it's not today is the old zoning code. And so when we look to the future and looking at how we can embrace this potential, this opportunity before us, it does get into the weeds of understanding zoning code and policies around what's in there, what's not in there, and why are certain zoning types only in certain parts of our city versus other ones? Why can one city block build one type of house, and the other one across the street cannot? And some of these become conflicts in development, but more importantly, it becomes an inconsistency. And so we want to try to streamline that. That's where it becomes a benefit. Now, when you start looking at land use, what the things we've seen is, you know, since I took office in 2017 through now, our residents have seen single-family residential assessments, so their single-family homes, residential homes have increased in value by 74%. And so what that means is that your bill, when you bought your house in like 2017, through last year's budget, has increased 74%. And when we look at development, that's a bell curve, which means that there are a lot of people who've seen higher rates over that time, and some that have seen lower. My concern is, as we continue to grow, especially in neighborhoods that have not seen a lot of development or growth over the past many decades, they're going to see that exact same impact. And so when you look at our current zoning code, and the future changes for it, and you also apply into that our current tax structure. What happens now in our current tax structure, when you tax a house and land the same rate, if you live down the street from me, Will, and you buy a house, and you then put in a new kitchen, maybe put a little addition in the back, maybe improve the garage, and you sell the house, and our houses were the value the same amount, this is say $400,000. You sell your house, two years later, at $650,000, right? That's 250 above what mine was worth when you bought at the same time. Now, you've sold that house, that assessed value, that increased sales price is now distributed across all the neighbors. I don't have a new kitchen. I don't have a new walk-in closet. I don't have a new bathroom. You did and sold your house, but now I am punished for it. You got your money and left. The new person comes in, is buying the house at the value that they are willingly making. But us neighbors are now burdened with the fact you sold your house at a higher rate. Why? Because we have to buy the state code required to assess all homes, as if they were the same in terms of the increased value that you showed for yours. And so we start seeing real estate, especially as the transactions of the last five years have taken shape, you know, we're seeing a lot of people being pushed out of their homes, not because they want to, but because they have to. And so when we look to South Side, East End, North Side, and neighborhoods that we're starting to see these kind of pressures of increased assessed values, you're creating pressures on residents. And so when I look to the future of master plan, changing our zoning code, the biggest thing I care about is making sure, as we make these changes, we're also not destroying neighborhoods, displacing people that have made that community what it is, because of our tax structure. And so I believe, looking at a land value tax, more importantly, a removing of the burden of growth on our residents and homeowners, and placing it more on where we see growth happening, to the future of our budget, revenue growth, and that potential, focusing on and planning for growth, is what I want us to turn our heads to. Because the last several, seven budgets I've been a part of making specifically, that's where the rub is coming down that way.
Thank you for listening to America's Healthiest City on Mike King Biz Radio Network. All right, in the studio today with me is Andreas Addison, First Council, First District Councilman, gosh, I can't speak today. But also owner of Pure Fitness RVA, I want to talk a little bit about that. And I want to go, I'm going to kind of bounce around here a little bit, because I don't want to lose the time on the personal fitness side. Full disclosure, I'm in your gym three times a week, and I feel better, I look better.
You're doing great.
And yeah, so let's talk about individual health. We don't actually talk about that a lot on this show, because we really focus on how do we get everybody to recognize that working together is what's necessary. So we'll have some topics on that. But tell me a little bit about your views on individual health, and how that pursuit is important for us as individuals, but also community.
You know, individual health is as simple as just moving more. And I think a lot of people put too much emphasis on, you know, looks, weights, how many reps, time under this, time under that, how fast can I run a mile, a 10K. I really think it's just a matter of what makes you feel good. And personal health is, I think, also mental health. And the more we're able to, you know, release stresses through our body physically, with running, lifting weights, moving things around, carrying weights, or just simply getting outside and walking in the sunshine for a little bit every day, those little steps over time can transform, I think, how we take ourselves in a healthy body. And our bodies were meant to carry things, move, and distribute application of weight in certain capacities. We're mechanically built to do things. And when we don't, you know, I think we look at the rules of motion that plays into it. If a body in motion stays in motion, if you don't have energy to work out, you need to work out so that your body gives you energy, so you can continue to work out. If you don't, and you stay in restful state, your body will only produce the number of energy you need to stay that way. And so the holiest stays is internally, our body is a fascinating creature. The more we move, the better we're going to be. And so I believe that personal fitness is not defined by what your scale tells you, or how fast you can do this on a machine, or how much weight you can lift. I believe it's your own gauge on, do you feel happier today than yesterday? Do you feel like your body is moving more? Do you feel like you need to drink more water today? Or how about your appetite? Do you feel like you have, you know, I need more energy, because, man, yesterday's workout was really tough, and I know my body needs that nourishment to heal itself, right? And so as you start building in this capacity, and step by step, finding where your comfort zone is, it can be yoga, Pilates, group weight training in one of our classes, it can be doing a cycling class, Orange Theory, I don't care what it is. But finding the place where you thrive and have fun, and our challenge is what I think personal fitness is all about.
Well, I definitely enjoy the community aspect, and I can attest to sort of that, you know, body in motion mentality. I mean, there's this point about 20 minutes into the workout where I'm like, I want to go home. But then I push past that, you know, just a couple of minutes longer, and then I find myself near the end of the workout, powering through at the very end, where I feel like I have no energy left. And that translates to the rest of my life, where I'm thinking, oh, wait, I can do things. You know, like, not that I don't think I can do things, but I feel like I could do more, because I'm reminded on a regular basis that I can push my body down this point. That's not a question, but.
No, I love to hear that, because that's the kind of the purpose of my gym, was to create a space and a workout style that was challenging, but also there's multiple steps throughout each workout. So, you know, if you want to quit after the first step, well, you haven't even seen the second two yet, right? And so keep building yourself through that, and a lot of the things you're feeling are more mental than physical. A lot of it is, man, I just, I feel this, I feel that. Your body's just telling you it's responding to work. Your mind's taking it and interpreting it as, yeah, but the comfort of my couch, or my chair, my desk, or this is more easier to do. Of course it is. But if you've just finished through this, I think your perseverance and other challenges in the rest of the day, or the rest of the week, are going to be more easy, because you've seen how you can actually do things in that capacity. That's exactly kind of what I hope to get in my gym, and those who come to it.
Well, tell us a little bit about what's in store, and how long have you been doing this now? I know you just had your biggest class ever.
Yeah, we had 24 people on Saturday for our group class, huge turnout. It's, it was a mess. A lot of people moving in and around each other, it was great. I loved it. I was thriving off the energy. We've been open for a year and a half. It's been a great year and a half. I've learned a lot, being a business owner, being a coach, being the person doing and creating the workouts, building a team around this kind of model of fitness has been fun. I've been really blessed by people coming to the gym as members, and also as people that want to coach and be a part of the team. I really just kind of embracing what this option is. And so that's really what I've learned a lot, is that there are a lot of people looking for something fun, looking for a challenge, want to be part of community around that too, and that's what we're all about.
Well, I definitely can feel the sense of community there, and I think that anybody who's looking for an elected official to know a thing about building a community, you know, that makes sense to me. I want to talk a little bit about, about community, about collective decision-making. I know that you guys have recently put into place collaborative budget process. Tell us a little bit about that, and what's it mean to bring more people to the table?
You know, the, one of the tools and powers that city council has in our charter for Richmond, Virginia, is the power of the budget. And so we are the final decision-maker on how our budget's used. And so a lot of times, every council member presents these projects that are important to each district. And a lot of times, they're very important. But it's hard to get support when it's my district versus the other eight. And so what happens is, it becomes just like, well, can we all agree that we should put all these things in? And that's not really the best way to make decisions in a budget, technically. And so I look to cities like New York, and I look at Durham, North Carolina, and they both have participatory budgeting. And you can translate that into people's budget. It's engaging people throughout the year on the things they want to see in their neighborhood. And they could be seeing things as simple as a streetlight, park bench, maybe a playground. It could be things like, I want a community garden. And a lot of those things are just basic, good, community assets. And so when you start engaging the neighborhood around these things, and government puts money aside to make sure those can be achieved, you know, there's a whole process, planning, prioritizing, voting from the public, and then putting into our budget, and then procuring it, and making sure that can happen next year. It's about a year, year and a half cycle, from ideation, presenting your desire for your improvement in your neighborhood, to it happening, but that's just speed of government. And so I believe that there's a really good way to build trust, and restore trust in places where it's been broken for a long time, around how the budget can be seen to work. And it's going to start with small, simple things, right? Planting a tree, putting a shelter by a bus station. But then, once you do that one year, and the people see, it works. Wow, that my involvement made a difference. It's going to bring me more people, more ideas, more needs to the table. And I think the more empowering we can make of each community to identify what its strengths are, what its weaknesses are, and we can help them build those and improve those, the better we'll all be as a city. And so I'm excited to say, as of Monday, the update is that we have $3 million expected to be in our budget this year to support the kickoff of funding for participatory budgeting citywide. Now, this isn't like across all districts, this is across the entire city. And we're really focusing on reaching the hard-to-reach neighborhoods, the places where they might not trust government, they might not be engaged enough, maybe their work schedules just don't comply with when we have our meetings, and so they kind of feel like that's over there. This is a way to kind of engage them on their phone, on social media, and working in other forums in person as well, and trying to create this environment, so it's not a, I have to be here this one specific time. It's more of an engagement process through over weeks and months, where they can start feeling that they are empowered in the budget and how it operates.
So I appreciate the fact that you brought up, you know, that it takes time for things to happen, and certainly, this is a shortened amount of time when you get to this level of budgeting, because I understand you've been working for five years now to try to get to just this point. That's a good story, and it's a good news story, because there are people who are representing us that are working, and have been working for a long time, so that we can get to a place where we can be more efficient and have these gifts. So I'm grateful for that. What do you see is that arc, you know? Are we feeling good about where we're going as a city, from your perspective? Or, you know, it was harder to do things before, is it easier to do things now, do you think?
I think it's a little bit of both. I think, depending on what is needed, it can be either easier or hard. And this is because I think the temperature of the city is changing and growing. I really believe this, being this, is an election year for mayor, city council, and school board. I think the future next chapter for Richmond is on the table. It's on the ballot. And I think it needs to be seen as a citywide expectation on, okay, we've seen growth, we've seen development, we're seeing apartments coming in, we're growing in population as a whole, but what does that mean? Who are, who are people moving to Richmond? And what about the people who already live here and call it home? What are the things that bring us together? Because I do believe that that is probably the biggest task before us, is the growth we've seen with all the new apartments and residential housing we've seen across the city, and also those who've already called it home for decades, those who maybe grew up here. You know, there is a little bit of a conflict, where people just don't know who they are. And it's on both sides. And so for me, I think, understanding what that really looks like as a city is going to be the most important thing to do. It's where those kids go to school, it's where we see our new jobs and career centers create for opportunities for employment, it's how we see career pathways for our, you know, public school students to go from cradle to career, and how that is a streamlined path, diverting from the past expectation in some neighborhoods, where it's cradle to prison. And that is something that is, I think, a really big problem that has never been addressed. And this is a good time to really look at, we need to change the narrative that we have shown a lot of communities over the many decades that have been as a city, that we can do better, and we will do better. And what that better looks like isn't from an answer on my position, but it's what you show me, it's what we learn together. And participatory budgeting, honestly, is a good place to start. If I can show government working for you where you live, then we can talk about the things about where you work, where your kids go to school, and other places of that team. Because to me, I have a saying that I use when I teach UVA, that, you know, trust is a bridge built between two people. It takes time to build that bridge between two, so they meet in the middle, and it has to be strong enough to carry the truth across. And a lot of times, you don't really want to give it that time. The trust piece to build it so that truth can be told to me when I ask a question, takes a lot of time, and we rush it too much. And I think we assume we know what the answer is before we really ask the question. And more importantly, when you really focus on building trust, you might learn, I'm actually asking the wrong question. So the answer I'm getting confirms what I want it to be, rather than going, oh, I'm asking a question from my perspective. You don't see what I'm asking you, and I'm assuming you know that. What I think we need to get to is really looking at Richmond's future, and embracing this potential together, so that you feel that it not only includes you, but it is for you. And that's the biggest change before our city.
You're listening to America's Healthiest City on ESPN Richmond 106.1, part of the Mike King Biz Media Network. If you are new to this program, America's Healthiest City is a 10-year community partnership to make Richmond, the entire region, the healthiest in America by 2033. We cannot do it alone, we need your help. So please go to AmericasHealthiestCity.com to learn more about how you can get involved. And we have in the studio today Andreas Addison, First Council, First District City Councilman for the city of Richmond. I'll get this right one of these days. We'll have to have you come back on, because I don't have another transition. But here's, here's the opportunity, I think, for our listeners. There are a lot of different ways to get involved. You don't have to do it formally, but there are a lot of ways to get involved formally, whether it be coming to city council and speaking your mind. What are some ways that you encourage people to be heard, to share their ideas, and just be active participants in our community?
You know, I think, over my, you know, two terms on council, one of the most common ways we get told things is no, right? It's the, something is such an important problem, or an issue, or a project, and that is more about the opposing that thing in the moment. And I believe that the proper engagement is when, how about things that are good that you like, need to be also shared and celebrated too? When we are a city council, just hearing no, and the conflicts that they're creating, and we're trying to build progress, we're trying to, you know, create a future city, and we need developments to create revenue and jobs, so that we can support the next level of investment we need to make beyond that. And so while I get that there's change, and there's some friction in that, you know, there's an opportunity to really come together and say, you know, I really like these new bike lanes, they made it easier for my children to go to school. Or I really enjoy, you know, the improvements made at this park, or the fact I used to have to complain about the tall grass, and now it's being maintained, and my kids can play sports on it together. There's opportunities where we can start seeing how things have been made better, rather than it being all about the things that haven't happened, or I'm afraid of happening. And so for me, that's one thing. I always love when residents come and share, you know, you know, I had, I asked you a question, and I didn't think you'd ever be able to respond, and then one day magically it happened. Or they call me when their trash can gets taken away, and then, within a week, a new one's pulled back, and they just had no idea that could ever happen. And so there's times where I'll get the random thank you, and those mean the most. And I'm not saying that everything else doesn't matter, but when someone's able and willing to go, I complained, you took my complaint, and were able to get it taken care of and fixed, and enough to say thank you, is something that we take really seriously, because we very infrequently don't get that. The best level of community engagement is, what do you want to see better? What are you for in your neighborhood? What are the things you want to see improved? We already know there's lots of problems. I've got broken sidewalks, I've got empty tree wells, I've got places that you can't even go from the middle school to the community center safely, across Thompson Street, where it's a divide amongst activities for after-school programs. And I'm not the only school district that has that across the city, I know. But when you start looking at these things, when we do make improvements, and things are being made better, share that. Or give an idea of like, hey, you know what, I would love this to be better. I want this to be made and improved for my use, or the neighborhood's use. Those are the efforts of, I think, civic engagement that were often missed. And we always get to the place where it's the time for the vote, right? Yes or no? This is not good, or this is too bad, or whatever the outcome may be. And in the middle of all that are all these little decisions we have to make. And that's where I want to see people more understand that my job is not always this yes or no, the arbiter of the decision. It's more about understanding that there is a path and a vision forward together, what we all can benefit from. And I think that government in our city is getting to embrace that opportunity. We have a lot of work to do, trust me. We have a lot of things we are doing mediocre at best, and I think that's where we can start seeing, where we can start making some bigger steps forward and progress, really making our city one together.
Well, I have to remind myself that that pile of branches that I need to have taken away on the side of the road is just a photo snap and a 311 submission away.
Yes.
Just need to muster the energy to do it.
Well, there's that too, but yeah, it does work.